To call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Secretary, call the hall.
All present.
Excellent. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, second.
Moved by Lonnie, seconded by Jeremy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Board of Correspondents. Let's see. I've got a lot of stuff. Okay. DPI has created his reporting a new mandate guidance on this crime statistics on school property. Act twelve, which was created in 2023, is a new legal reporting requirement for schools and districts. The purpose of the statute is to collect data on state and local law violations that occur on school or district property. At the federal level, the U.S. Senate advances the resolution to rescind the FCC rule allowing student use of mobile Wi-Fi hotspots. This is kind of a big deal because a lot of our libraries use them, including the Algoma Library and schools, especially for rural districts. So, the Wi-Fi hotspots. So, getting rid of this isn't just going to be temporary. They want to make it permanent. So, that's going to bar any, the FCC from doing anything in helping low-income and rural students. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau projects that the state will finish the budget with more than 4.3 billion in surplus, but it expects lower tax collections over the following two-year period. And that will be a net impact of about 335 million in tax revenue for the capital work with for this next budget. Speaking of the budget, the Senate Writing Committee scheduled the first vote, and in that they stripped the governor's budget of 612 proposals that were deemed policy-related by the committee. So, hopefully, they'll come through with policy, but a lot had to do with some K-12 funding. They're going to work on doing some minor budget appropriations. Typically, this usually, they work on the smaller things first, and then they'll leave K-12 education for later on. So, that's going to be a little bit. Representative Joel Kitchens is going to be in our area for listening sessions on the budget. He will be here on May 30th from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the City Hall. So, he'll be able to listen, and I don't think he'll take questions. A listening session should technically be where he listens to things that we want to talk and advocate for. So, I would encourage anyone who's available to come in and sit down and let him know what we need in regards to education and the budget. Several, two bills received some public hearings. Senate Bill 170, which is the bill allowing WARS ad newitens to return to work without suspending their annuity, and then AB 156, which is referred to as Aaron's Law, which is require sexual abuse prevention education in grades 4K through 12. All right, the Assembly Education Committee also met on AB 210 to change which students can qualify for academic excellence, higher education scholarships. This change is kind of interesting because it will allow high schools with the senior class under 80, which would impact us, to designate one student to qualify for the said scholarship, and then the board would ultimately choose the 10 seniors statewide that would receive it. And then there's AB 226, a bill prohibiting school boards and independent charter schools from providing ultra-processed foods in free or reduced lunch meal programs through the National School Boards program and the Federal School Breakfast Program. WASB expects a little bit of pushback with that because why are we just targeting free and reduced lunch? It should be for all lunches. Everything is going to have the ultra-processed foods. Get rid of it all. So, that would. And I don't know if I want to get into the high cost versus general special education grant because that's kind of a big thing going in. One of the things that Mr. Kitchens did, or Representative Kitchens did indicate that might go through is more funding for special ed. WASB did a nice little conversation on the difference between the high cost and the general special ed. So, try to make it real succinct in case any of you can show up. But high cost is mostly impacts students that are 30,000 or more in order to educate and transportation and things like that. There are only 228 school districts that have high impact. The legislator was looking at putting more funding into that category. We would like that to be in the general category. That impacts all 421 school districts, and that is spread out equally amongst all the districts based on their needs. So, that, if more money could be put in there, right now, I think they're operating at a 24% return.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Oh, it's higher than that. Okay, and we would like that up to 60. Hopefully, they can get that. So, that's, but if you want a better review of what's going on between the high-end cost and general ed, check out the WASB. They've got a nice summary of that. And that is my report. All right, moving on. Board Ceasar Report, Chrissy.
So, last week, we had the delegate convention for Ceasar, and that's where we invite the Ceasar reps from every school district in the area to come together, and then we hold an election for the seats that are up for grabs. Brilliant, Luxembourg, Casco, and Manitowoc were up for, their term expired. We had five nominees and actually had to vote at this one, so that's kind of exciting. That's like more candidates than normal. Manitowoc, Brilliant were both reelected. LC was not reelected, and they were replaced with Seymour, so. Then they went over some high-level stuff from the annual report, which I'm just going to go through some quick numbers. You'll probably get this in your email, but I know that it's a lot of information. So, if you didn't know, Ceasar covers 38 districts, 209 public schools with almost 83,000 students. They now employ 285 people. Learning Services had 1,756 attendees over 131 events, so they are doing a lot with our districts, and they used $5,045,361 in grant and contract work to support our districts. So, if you've ever had to write a grant or know how much work goes into that, getting $5 million is no easy feat. We also talked a lot about the Youth Apprenticeship Program, which I know I've brought up many times in here. It's only a three-year-old program, and it is a $10.4 million estimated wages earned by the students in the school year '24, '25. So, that's awesome economic impact to our area. And also, a little plug, on June 26th, there's a golf outing that all the proceeds go to the Youth Apprenticeship Program. That's at Hilli Haven. Come join me, watch me embarrass myself golfing. So, the sheet, they gave this out to every district that was there. Algoma was able to utilize $68,292 of free resources from Ceasar VII, and that includes some Title III academic career planning, youth apprenticeship, regional career pathways, special education induction programs. So, these are all services that Algoma was utilizing, and that was free. So, that was really cool. Lots of good numbers, lots of great data. And then for, in terms of the delegate convention yet, Sue today was nominated and received the chair appointment. Andrew Mazur is the vice chair, and I am the treasurer again this year. Then we went into our regular board meeting. The biggest stuff in there is that we accepted the resignation of Stacy Opali. So, many of you know her as the Executive Director of Learning Services. She will be going back to Manitowoc School District. So, that was the excitement on that end. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chrissy? All right, moving on. Board President Announcements. I only have three, four. All right. ABA showcase is Wednesday. Hopefully, some of the board members can make it.
You skipped over it.
I skipped over Sophia. Sorry. I am so sorry. I saw you walk into the baseball game. I'm surprised you're here.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It's a little chilly out there.
There weren't many people there. Yes. You had a blanket though. All right. Sophia, your student report.
I think there's not really a bulletin going on, but NHS is having their induction ceremony on Friday at 6:00. So, that's for the new members and then the current members. So, I'll be going to that. And then that same night at 7:00, there's like the senior awards and the scholarships. All the seniors go, and like they get their cords and like their like scholarship money, and then they graduate at 2:00 on Sunday. So, I don't know if I'm going to go to that. My friends are graduating, so.
You should.
Maybe, yeah. We'll see, we'll see. And then track, they have a conference meet in Kiwanee. I think the track team's been doing pretty good. There's been like a couple people that have been doing really good, so hopefully, they can win the conference. Softball, they play at Peschio tomorrow, and then the regionals are Thursday, so that's $6 to get in. And they just won conference, actually. But, yeah, they've been doing really good, I think, and they won, they've been winning regionals the past, like, two years, I want to say. So, hopefully, they can get another one. And then baseball, they play today. This is away. They played at 4:30, and then they play at home at 4:30 against Peschio. And I want to say their regionals is like two weeks away. I don't think it's next week. I think it's the week after, I want to say. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Other question?
Come to graduation so you can see what it's like for Nashville.
Yeah, I got, I got your, my mom's like, I need to plan your graduation party. I'm like, okay, Mom.
Is there anyone in public participation? Okay. Now, she stole some of my thunder on my board president. I was going to invite everyone to the honors award program on Friday, May 23rd. The ABA showcase on Wednesday, May 21st from 4:00 to 6:00. Graduation on May 25th, and Joel Kitchens coming on May 30th. That's all I have in this. And now, time for the administration report.
Good evening, everyone. Two quick things for tonight, so we'll do an update on finances, and we'd like to go over our open enrollment applications for next school year. Turn over to Amber right away.
So, not a whole ton going on in finances. Kind of wrapped up the supply purchases in April. The common school library funds were received in April, and it was quite a bit more than we had budgeted for. I think we've budgeted around $48,000. It was closer to $55,000. So, this money needs to be spent on items specific to the library. And if you go to DPI's website, there's actually a whole list of things you can and cannot spend it on. So, books is one of the main things you can spend it on. Some technology purchases like VR headsets or tablets that are going to be housed in the library, but it cannot be used for individual classrooms. It has to be kept in the library. You can check it out, but it's got to be a library-owned material.
Is there a wish list of items that?
Yes, I think she does have a wish list, and our library director is currently working on spending the money. It's, it's something new for her to be told you have to spend, so. You can roll the money over to next year. It is not encouraged to do so. If we do, then I have to do a bunch of accounting on the background to make sure it is segregated out on our balance sheet so that we know we have this common school fund that has to be spent for that specific purpose, so. Lottery credit payments were received from the county. They gave it from the state, and then they passed it on. That lottery credit money is money that helps the taxpayers pay a portion of their tax bills. It is exactly what it is called, lottery credit. So, when you go out and buy a Wisconsin lottery ticket, a portion or the proceeds from those sales come to help reduce property taxes, and that goes statewide. The CKLA pilot was purchased in April and paid, and then we will have the actual curriculum payment will be coming up here probably, probably in June. I don't think we'll get it paid on the media. And then another round of the Chromebook stocking stations was also purchased. We did get finally our first IDEA flow-through grant reimbursement for the year. There's been a lot of back and forth between our office and DPI getting the budget finalized and in order, so finally got that in. And then we did get an aid transit from Ceasar. So, because Ceasar helps provide some of our special ed services, they can file for reimbursement through the special education aids. And then what we've paid them, they have to reimburse us the proportionate share, so. And then we had our quarterly occupational therapy. So, we'll go on to our non-operating funds. Really nothing going on there. All the debt payments have been made. There were no expense activities for the non-referendum capital or the referendum capital in April. And then the referendum financials update. This is just your beginning and ending balance, and you can see we didn't spend anything in April, but we did earn $57,000 in interest. We had three, I think it was three CDs that matured, and their interest payments were paid at maturity. So, some CDs we get each month, some of them we get at maturity. So, that's why that number is so high. And that's it for finance.
Any questions for you?
Postpone the construction, keep that money in the bank for a year.
I wish we could.
All right, our open enrollment window for next school year is closed, the close end of April, open then beginning of February. So, we have 15 applicants for open enrollment into the school district. It includes students from Southern Door, Kiwanee, Luxembourg, Casco, Appleton, Oshkosh, and St. John Bay school districts. We had 16 applicants for open enrollment out of the district. That number is a little misleading, though, because some of the applicants are already approved. They've been open enrolled out before from us, but the parents submitted applications again, so. They include going to, applying for Appleton, Green Bay, Kiwanee, Luxembourg, Casco, Semestral, and Southern Door school districts. Some factors for why families are open enrolling out of our district is because they already have siblings that are approved for open enrollment out, that are attending those school districts. Two students applied for virtual learning through the Appleton School District. And then another big factor is parents' employment because of where they work. It's just easier for transportation costs. So, the board will need to approve these tonight in action, and then families will be notified by U.S. mail. It's a requirement from DPI that we need to do that. Just a reminder that the alternative open enrollment window opens July 1st and runs through the mid-September, really goes through that third Friday count for us. So, families do have another option to open enroll either in or out, so. And just a reminder that we are closed for open enrollment for students coming into grades five, and then also for special education for grades 10 and 11, so.
With that being closed, did you see anybody that was interested that?
Are those numbers up or down for the?
I would say we're up in the number of students open enrolling in and down in the number of students open enrolling out. So, heading in the right direction for that.
And are those closed due to those particular classes being full?
Correct, yeah. So, the board, back in April, March, I think it was. March approved the set numbers for open enrollment in and out. Makes up of our current staffing needs and the current makeup of those grade levels. That's all I have.
Elementary Principal, Ms. Serri.
All right. I just wanted to start with a huge thank you to everyone who helped put together a wonderful staff appreciation week for all of our staff at the elementary school. Huge thank you to the PTS. They spoiled us as they usually do. They provided some sweet treats in the morning. We did a Name That Tune game again. They had a gift for the teachers that was star-themed, beverages, candy, snacks. They provided a lunch for us from Steel Belly, and then they hosted a social after-school for us at the day. So, that was fantastic. Of course, the school board lunch is also very well received and appreciated, appreciated. And then Marie and I also did a pizza lunch for staff on one of the days as well. So, it was a busy week, but it's always something that the teachers look forward to, and we're just very grateful that we have such support from everybody around us. Just some end-of-the-year miscellaneous items. I feel like this time of year, it always feels like we have our feet in two different years. We're wrapping up things from this year, but also making sure everything is planned and ready to go for next year. So, on the backend of things, we've been working on next year's schedule, staffing for next year. We've been working on class lists, file list documents. All of those things, the teachers have been putting a lot of time into reviewing and talking about and collaborating on. And then as far as the wrap-up goes, we have had so many field trips this month, and there's even more these last two weeks of school here. So, that's been pretty fun to see. The weather has cooperated for the most part. We are having our end-of-the-year bash next week, Thursday on the 29th. This year, we're doing it during the school day, hosted by the PTS, so it'll be from noon until 3:00. Grade levels have signed up for one-hour bands, so that's always a good time. On the very last day of school, May 30th, we do have our award ceremony in the morning at 8:30, sixth grade promotion at 9:30, and then our 4K students are graduating at 1:00 o'clock in the afternoon on that last day. And I forgot to mention, we have some staff in both of our buildings that are coordinating a senior send-off again, where the seniors will come down to the elementary school, walk down the hallways. Our kids are making signs and posters and decorations, sticking up and all that good stuff. So, that's this Friday. They're really excited about that. And then I just wanted to share some summer school numbers from Mrs. Harmon. So, we have 163 students enrolled. We have, oh, let's see, 11 Session 1 classes and also 11 Session 2 classes. Not all the same. We have 12 teachers, five paraprofessionals, and four high schools, high school athletes who have volunteered their time to help as well. New this year, we have the Latin cooking class, which is back. So, students are very excited for that. When launched two years ago, it was definitely a popular one. This year, Wolfton is going to be included in summer school, and it will run most of summer school, so all the way through August. Kiwanee County is doing another year of Kids in the Kitchen, so that's usually a week-long class that fills up very quickly. Erin Balone is running two different CPR babysitting courses this year as part of summer school. And then one other thing to note is just with the construction that is going to be starting, we've had to be a little flexible with kind of our room placements and where some of our classes will be held. And Tracy Brunet has been wonderful in helping us to coordinate transportation for some of the classes, to be bus from the elementary school to the high school, to use the gym and the aux gym. And then I know she'll also be doing transportation to Packer Pubs, to and from Packer Pubs as well. So, we should be heard too. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
I do, and it's probably a joint question for you and Dave. How many teaching staff had the graduating seniors as kindergarten, you know, kindergarten through graduation? Do we, I, I'm going to assume some of them were senior, but I mean, do we have an idea? Because I think that would be incredible. I mean, I had them when they were in kindergarten, now they're graduating, so.
Yes. Robinson, Robinson. Yeah, first, second grade, well, second grade, quite a few. Fredl, Peter. Jen, we have a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I've never counted them out, but more than two.
It's just, it was, it was just something I thought, I'm like, how many people? Because it's a small community, and these people have been here for a while.
Yeah. Tammy Smith would be one of them.
Well, the teachers there are naming, and my kids, and my uncle says 25, so. 24.
What I love about our community, that's wonderful. So, thank you. Just curious. All right. What's next here? Mr. Robertson.
All right. Principal Principal's report. Yeah, in case you didn't know, Friday at 6:00, National Honor Society will be conducting new members, and then there will be a senior awards night immediately following.
What's the name of that again?
It's going to be this Friday, at the Algoma PSC. And in all seriousness, it is really nice to have people there to support not only the seniors but the community members that are donating money to the, to the scholarships and recognizing our seniors. It's nice to have a good turnout, so please come if you can. We'd love to have you there. And then the other thing I just want to talk about is, so this is a fun fact, speaking of fun facts. We have four graduates that will be graduating Sunday, and these are four students that have already graduated with their associate's degree from UW GB through the Rising Phoenix Program. So, it's our first crop, so to speak, of kids that have gone through and taken that program. I think we've learned some things as far as communication goes between parents and the school and sort of the ins and outs of that. I know Courtney has learned a lot. I think her first year coincided with the first year of the Rising Phoenix, and so there's been some learning there that's been done. But we're super excited to have those four students. This Sunday, they'll be wearing green and white stoles. So, if you see big stoles on their graduation garb, it's because they have already graduated from UW GB with an associate's degree. And that's going to be Olivia Cabino, Hannah Reisberg, Mason Lipke, and Lexi Crowsey. Coming up, our newest cohort, there are 13 students that have officially begun charting, charting their path towards earning their associate's degree. And then this new class of 2027 cohort will join the 12 that are already enrolled. So, we'll have a total of 25 students enrolled with the Rising Phoenix Program in the next school year. So, thank you to the school board and to the school district, the community, the families for continuing to support making, to supporting that program, and also just making college more accessible and affordable to our kids. It's really, it's an exciting development in education, so.
Do you know what their degrees were in?
I do not know what they are specifically. I know.
Just out of curiosity.
How does that work? So, it's fantastic. I mean, that's awesome news. That is a great fun fact. How does that work, though? Because don't you need a high school diploma to get a college degree?
No. So, what happens is they're concurrent, they're earning concurrent credits, so they're earning dual-credit courses. And it's a combination of courses offered here and at the university. So, they're actually earning both at the same time. They're earning their high school, their high school degree while they earn these, these dual-credit courses. So, we can, we comp those dual-credit courses towards our high school graduation, and then you end up with a, with a two-year associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time.
That's pretty neat.
Yeah, it's a huge, it's a huge, huge cost saving to the kids. And when it start, I don't know if now, because it's, it's been, but when it started, they really wanted to target first-generation college students, kids that maybe did not traditionally have access or didn't access the college system. So, it's, it's a pretty exciting, a pretty exciting.
Do you see the, I mean, obviously, a growth in, in just this year? Do you think that has a lot to do with the cost of?
Yes. I think it has to do with the cost. I just think it's the changing landscape of education, Jeremy, where, where the, what was, what was is no longer, and there's just so many opportunities for kids to learn in so many different ways. It's not dual-credit courses. It's in, you know, in our own district, we have Pathway or Pathfinder, we have ABA. They're just, we've gotten, I think, a lot smarter how to meet kids' needs and how to, and how to help them progress in, in different ways, and it's just another pathway.
Who pays for that?
So, the, the school district picks up the first 18 credits, and then the families pick up the remaining cost of those credits. But it's at a discounted price, and I don't know what that discount is right off the top of my head. But Courtney knows all those ins and outs, and I have that conversation.
Yeah, great work. That's awesome.
Any other questions, Chris? All right, moving on. Pathfinder, Loma Venture Academy and Packer Pubs report. Ms. Warren.
Yes, I'm just going to start with Pathfinder. So, I was talking to Lexi today, and we were looking at, so at Pathfinder, we have a wall in one of the rooms, and when kids graduate, they just put handprints on the wall. It's kind of like our wall of honor. And Pathfinder has been open for eight years, I believe, and there are 50 handprints up there today. So, I was just kind of like thinking and reflecting on that, like our graduating class, is it even at the PSC?
Uh, it's right around.
That's an entire graduating class, I think, that would have not had a diploma that worked for Pathfinder. So, just thought that was a cool stat, and it was just a cool thing to reflect on today. And to wrap up for Pathfinder, we have two students who are joining Youth Apprenticeship, which was really cool for us. The Youth Apprenticeship lady that we have here had reached out and asked if there are any students there that would be interested. So, I sent her down there to meet with the kids, and two of them were, so that's huge for two of those kids down there. And the other kids are just wrapping up their credits, projects, and packets for the year, and they're doing an end-of-the-year field check. For ABA, our project showcase is Wednesday. Newman Park update, so the four boys are doing the Newman Park project, have four of their picnic tables built of the six. They've been working really hard on that Wednesdays and Fridays, so that has been a cool idea to bring them out to the shop on Friday and watch them do their work. So, pretty cool things that they're learning, just kind of having measure and cutting angles, and everything goes into making a picnic table. So, one of them will be at the project showcase. Went and picked it up today, and they're standing there making it all day, so. If you noticed out front, there is a space that is. Um, if you noticed out front, there is a space that is all mulch. And, um, Justin took all of the sad off. We are making an outdoor learning space there and out by the cafeteria with some of our grandsons that we have left over. So we'll just have a space with mulch and different picnic tables, um, potentially an awning out there for kids to work. Um, it's right by the apple trees. So once the apple trees are in season, they'll be able to have a snack while they're working. Um, but it's just something easy, I feel like, that we can give to the school that we don't necessarily currently have. Like kids can go outside, but there's not a lot of seating. So teachers will be able to sit on the lawn, sit wherever. But, um, we, like I said, we have grandsons to spend, so we thought that'd be a cool way to, um, spend some of those money. Um, we have three students, um, who are going on a backpacking trip this summer, but they are doing their practice backpack trip this weekend in Kalamari State Park. Um, one of the students is passionate about learning outdoors and, um, the mental health that goes with being able to be in nature. So he applied for a grant, uh, back in October through the Canary Fund and received a grant to help purchase some of the backpacking supplies. Um, and his project, um, this, actually it's been a year-long project, but this semester has been kind of doing how-to guides for his classmates. Um, planned the whole picture to Rock's backpacking trip that he'll be taking this summer. Um, had to map everything out depending on how many miles they could walk in a day and where they would camp. Um, so they are doing their practice hike this weekend, which I think is going to be a little chilly, so. Good luck to them. Um, and lastly, we are having, well, it's called senior send-off as well, but our first senior send-off. So, um, we've never like figured out a way to kind of, um, celebrate our graduates in ABA. Like they obviously graduate with everybody else and they have their own cords. But we wanted to do something special for them, so we are doing our own senior send-off after the walk-through at the elementary school this year. We invited families in. Um, our younger students will be, um, giving speeches to the older students, uh, their impact in ABA. And we'll just be having the cake and the fresh ones after. And then Pack-a-Pup's summer enrollment, um, we are booked full. What's the link? It is fine to see, maybe this is another.
All right, any questions? All right, moving on. Marie, Special Ed Williams.
So we have, um, two upcoming, upcoming professional development opportunities. Uh, the first is on our first June, um, staff building day. We have our, um, CISA seven special education staff coming back. That's Heidi Seibert and Jessica Caffeyard. Um, they are just wrapping up. We've been doing a year-long series with them on some best practices in special education. So that will be on June second for a half-day. And then through the one-year grant that we, um, have received this year through the, there's a really long acronym here, I spelled it out for you in here, but it's, um, the SNS GS3 grant. Um, Risa Haas has been doing some coaching sessions with some of our, um, team. It's been myself, Katie Summerby, Heather Vasky, and Angie Kandurski. And we've been just talking about some of the system changes, um, to kind of look at behavior from a different lens. But they're going to be doing a lunch and learn for our full teaching staff on Wednesday, June fourth. And we're meeting a food truck, um, to eat this up.
Very nice. Any questions from Marie? All right. Other items for discussion? Now we'll keep moving on. All right, action items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. So moved, moved by Chrissy, seconded by Lonnie. To approve the regular board meeting minutes of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm looking for an appro, uh, looking for a motion for the presentation and approval of bills in the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Moved by Chris Benz.
Aye.
Seconded by Jeremy. To approve the bills in the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the WIAA twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six membership.
So moved.
Seconded by Michael, seconded by, oh, by Chrissy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Was it you, Jeremy?
No.
Oh. I'm looking for a motion to approve the open enrollment applicants for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
By Michael. By Wukulishianen. To approve the open enrollment applications for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six CISA seven contract. So moved. Moved by Chrissy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chris. All those in favor of approving the CISA seven contract?
Aye.
Signified by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the first agency-based accident insurance coverage in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, moved by Jeremy, seconded by Chrissy. Any discussion? This was information that was included in our packet. Um, I have a question. So each instance has twenty-five thousand, I believe. Um, but death is a thousand. I guess I'm just confused. What page are you on? Um.
Oh, where?
I see it's three, it's right here. It's like death is a thousand and dismemberment is five thousand. And I guess I'm just wondering if there's any reasoning behind.
Um, not that I know of. This is basically the same policy that we have had year after year. Um, we can find out more information from our event about this if you'd like, and I can get back to you.
Let me see. That, that's literally all I, I noticed it today, otherwise I would have contacted someone, but. Any other questions for discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Jeremy, seconded by Chrissy, to approve the first agency-based accident insurance coverage in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the donation by Olson Fabrication Incorporated for the installation of beams needed to mount the new baseball scoreboard. Moved by Lonnie.
Seconded.
Can we make a correction on that?
Seconded by Michael. Discussion, what's your, what's the correction? Yes.
Olson Fab isn't installing them. They maybe made them, but they're not installing them. I don't know what they, what they donated, if they donated the material or the city will be installing them. I don't know if they donated the material and the labor, but it should be.
Well, maybe they're writing the city.
So.
They, I would love if they would.
Maybe they're offsetting the cost of the city doing it.
Yeah, so they emailed it from Olson Fab, says, um, they acknowledge a donation from Olson Fab. They did the work on the beams needed to mount the scoreboard, so.
So we made the motion, maybe we need them to install it.
Yeah. I guess for the materials or labor or whatever over that's worded maybe.
Donation of the beams needed to mount the scoreboard. See, somebody may be in the park or the committee getting mad about the wording, so.
Could be, yes, I would. City, cause you're, please. Okay, so Lonnie made the amendment. Michael, would you be okay with it to, um, get rid of the word install, installing?
Yeah.
All right. So let's take a vote on the amendment of substituting the word of for approving the donation by Olson Fabrication Incorporated of the beams needed to mount the new baseball scoreboard. Moved by Lonnie, seconded by Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, request for future agenda items. Are there any? If not, I'd like to take a quick moment here. And I would, I'm sorry, Sophia laughed, but I want to wish the students a wonderful summer. And I hope they continue to learn and grow and thank you for making this a successful year. I want to thank the parents for their unwavering support and belief in our students. Your encouragement makes a significant difference in their growth and success. I would like to thank the community and area businesses for the collaboration and partnerships that we have with you. And your involvement is invaluable. I would like to thank the staff and administration for your unwavering commitment to our students throughout the school year. Your passion for teaching and your genuine care for our students have made a profound difference in their lives and in our community. And I would like to thank the school board members for your commitment to providing the best education possible for our students. I appreciate your time and your expertise. Your decisions have, have had a positive impact and I'm grateful for all of your leadership. This has been a wonderful school year, so thank you for everything. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Jeremy, second. Oh, that's right, I have to read the whole thing, I'm so sorry. All right, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five one C for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, and staffing.
So moved.
Moved by Jeremy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lonnie. We do a roll call. Michael.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Chris.
Yes.
Lonnie.
Yes.
Any yess?
Yes.
Chris, Jeremy, yes. Motion carries. Six forty-four, I think, six thirty-four.